Please bow your heads. Oh God, grant us your peace and understanding so that we can lay aside our human failings of hate, prejudice, and fear that hinder us from achieving accord with each other. Help us to unite in truth, peace, and faith with one mind and voice. Tonight, we especially ask your blessing on all veterans, especially those that have departed this earthly life and those among us who are afflicted with illness, pain, and suffering. Lift them up and restore them to good health. For those, for all those in service, we pray for your protection and safety. Grant them courage and loyalty, and may they return whole to their families and loved ones. In this month of Thanksgiving, let us also be grateful for our wonderful city and for the ability to gather freely and openly without fear from persecution or oppression. In all these things, we pray in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, under the allegiance to be, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, and as I say in every meeting, rules of decorum are in effect, excuse me. Next thing is citizens' comments, Mr. Steinhegen.
If you'll do me a favor, would you turn that on up there? It's not, it's not on, the little red light will come on. There you go.
My address is on the form. When I was Mayor of McLennan-Chisholm, we received-
Mr. Steinhegen, you have to state your name into the record?
I did.
You said it was on the form.
I said, Robert Steinhegen.
You have to-
My address is on the form.
You have to announce your address over that so they can hear it for the, for the recording.
I object to that. 304 Pheasant Hill Drive. I'll start my time again, I'll restart. When I was Mayor of McLennan-Chisholm, we received an application and rough development plan from three owner developers of 4,000 acres in McLennan-Chisholm's ETJ to create a water district. The plan included a massive apartment complex and high-density development. Our then-city attorney, David Pascal, advised us to hire a land attorney because what was being proposed in our ETJ required a board-certified attorney who specialized in land and development, which included municipal utility and public improvement districts. Obviously, no city attorney has that kind of expertise, which leads me to ask whether the current city attorney, Mr. Hala, who holds no board certifications and has absolutely no expertise in land law, made the same recommendation to this council in regards to the proposed mud and development agreement with the Huffines Development Group. For two and a half hours during an executive session of a city council meeting, we met with our land attorney, who educated us about how little power the city of McLennan-Chisholm had over anything these landowner developers wanted to do. The bigger issue was that all three landowner developers were represented by an attorney named Ms. DeVentura, who is arguably the best land attorney in the state of Texas. She represents her clients, not the city of McLennan-Chisholm. She is a member of the state bar of Texas. As such, she advocates for her clients and advocates for her clients alone. She will never, she can never, and she does never, do anything that would advise, that would do anything detrimental to her clients. Time and again, Ms. Ventura put us on a time clock, typically one or two weeks at a time for date certain of our decision. She'd say, "Well, we'll just move on." She kept saying that. However, every time we said, "Well, then you're going to have to move forward without our consent," she came back and asked, "Well, how much more time do you need?" You see, the landowner developers needed those 4,000 acres to be inside the city of McLennan-Chisholm. When we threatened to give the 4,000 acres to the city of Rockwall, all three landowners decided to come and sit down with me and another member of the city council to try and negotiate a deal. Ultimately, they wanted McLennan-Chisholm to play ball with them, and worst thing we could have done was to take them out of our ETJ, which is exactly what we did, as all of you know. Many of you, behind the dais, criticized us on social media and in public, saying we gave our city's future away, that it was the stupidest decision that we've ever made. The question that you should be asking yourself, yourselves, is why did Rockwall give that ETJ back? Did you know Rockwall and Heath both have a standard? They do not allow PIDs or muds. Why is that? If you don't know the answer to that question, you had no business trying to negotiate with this, the Huffines Development Group, which is exactly what you did. I watched in amazement at how unprepared this council was to address and, and deal with Mrs. Ventura. Ms. Ventura made it seem as though she was on your side, but when I showed this development agreement to the, to developer friends of mine, they all laughed when they saw, and by the way, they're all represented by Ms. DeVentura, they said, "Maybe we need to do business in McLennan-Chisholm too, if it's that easy." You approved a mud, and you had really no idea why you, why you did it. It was the wrong decision. There's nothing you can do about it now, all those steps are being taken to try and thwart what is, what you've done, but make no mistake, what you've done will have irreparable, will do irreparable harm to the city. I'm going to let you in on a little secret about what's about to happen next. Don't be surprised when Ms. Ventura comes and says, "Hey, would you guys be interested in creating a PID? If you create a PID instead of 2,188 homes in 898 acres, we'll lower that to maybe 1,800 homes, but you've got to play ball. It'll bring all of those homes, and you'll get all this tax money to boot, but you've got to play ball." I would encourage you, before you do anything else, hire a land attorney, get their advice, understand what you're doing, because what you're going, if you move forward with a PID, after this mud has been established, which is already bad enough, it will, there's no going back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have no others for the night, right? Okay, then citizens' comments are closed for the evening. All right, next thing on the agenda is action regarding approving the minutes for October 27th, 2021. I'll look for a motion to approve those agenda meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 27th, 2021.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. If there isn't any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the next thing. The next thing is item 6.1, Discussion and Action Regarding Approval of a Resolution of the City Council of the City of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, to Cast Votes for Candidates to Serve as Members of the 2022-2023 Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Lorna, I'll turn that over to you.
Yes, Mayor Short and the city administrator received a letter from Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors asking for the mayor to vote on the representative openings for the Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. The Board of Directors provides oversight and leadership and approves the budget and does the audit. Looking at the list that we were provided, I am suggesting that the mayor select John Brant and give all of our 15 votes to John Brant. We all have received an email from him this past week requesting his support. The reason I'm suggesting John Brant is because John, as I said, is from Fayette, he's on the Fayette City Council, and he is the only other person, he's the only person on that list that doesn't live in Rockwall or Heath. So it would be good to have another city represented, because all the other folks live in Rockwall and Heath. So my, my request for consideration is that you all agree to have the mayor cast his 15 votes for Mr. John Brant.
And I agree with, I agree with Lorna for us getting that letter. If the majority of the people that sit on that board, which is the one that looks at the valuation of our homes throughout the county, if they're all in the two, I don't want to say biggest cities, but the two cities with the most influence in the county, yeah, I think a fresh face needs to be on that board, so I agree with her. Ms. Trudy, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, no.
Because that's the only one that was nominated outside of people for Rockwall. And Heath, I'm sorry.
But is there a reason why it's just these? Did you hear my other stories?
Oh, yeah, please.
Is there a reason, I mean, how did they come up with these names?
Those people submitted their name as volunteers.
I got you.
And some of these people are already currently serving.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're also safe, they're already-
Are they all currently serving?
I don't, I can't answer that one.
Yep.
Brian, any comments?
No.
Questions? Dan?
I've actually been in a couple of debates, and I've come across John Brant a couple of occasions, and so I like his resume. I didn't realize that all these other folks were coming from two separate cities, and so, yeah, I'd like to see some of the lesser cities being represented.
Have representation on the record.
Yeah, absolutely, so that convinces me. Yes, I'll go with that.
And Ms. Lorna, we've heard from you, if there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion to approve what she's requested.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that you cast your 15 votes for Representative Mr. John Brant for the Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, if there's not any further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, next thing, moving on to 6.2, Discussion and Action Regarding Reimbursement to the McLennan-Chisholm Fire Department New Station Budget for Resealing Concrete Seams and Curves. Before I turn it over to Chief Simmons, the invoice, I guess, is what this was?
Correct.
The invoice that you have in front of you, I was up here last week?
Yes, sir.
They had the people that do this work up here doing some other work. Fire chief approached me about it, said if they're here, they can do it now, they have the time, otherwise if they don't, we may be scheduled out months out, and with the season changing, with everything going on, there may be additional costs because there may be more shifting, more problems with everything. So we asked if we could do it. He had the money in his budget, and then with talking with Lisa about it, we could do that, and then it's up to council if we want to take money out of, out of our budget and replace or replenish what came out of his fire station budget for that. So I told him since I were already here, go ahead and get it fixed. So that's why we're here tonight.
Correct.
Chief, I'll turn it over to you to explain a little bit why it needed to be done.
All right, what you can see is to remove, replace all caulking and the saw cuts that you see in the concrete, expansion joints, sidewalk expansion, and then the big thing, I think, was around the base of the building, because we've had some issues with water building up in the pit, the, you know, subfloor down there. We think that would probably help prevent some of that after going around and looking at the building, so not only that, as we started having some separations in the curbs and sidewalks, the more water gets in there over time, what's going to happen is we'll start seeing sidewalks walking on us, moving around, so the opportunity was to go ahead and get it done.
No, right out here.
Sorry, curbs in the sidewalks there.
No, not the new building.
No, no, this is for the, oh, sorry. This is for the existing building. This is for City Hall.
I got you.
Sorry.
The new match, they can get in here.
I thought he mentioned that in the beginning. It's for City Hall, it's not for the new station.
City Hall.
But he was able to take money out of it.
Got you.
For this building.
He pre-sold for us.
So you're talking circumference around this building?
All of City Hall parking lots, and all around this building, yes.
I thought that was a really nice gesture that you just gave us that number.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought the mayor mentioned City Hall in the beginning, he took and ran with it, so.
I know, that's why I was like, what?
I apologize, yes.
So that's to replace everything around City Hall. That's the new entryway that you come in, and then all the concrete sidewalks and the expansion base around the base of the building here.
Okay.
All right, so that's, that's what this is about. So I'll entertain a motion to approve us taking money out of the city-
Building funds.
-out of the city building fund and replenishing money into the McLennan-Chisholm new station budget.
Do we know how much is in that?
Huh?
Do we know how much is in that? No, no.
Oh, how much is-
In our building fund right now.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, enough to cover this, well, more than enough, so.
Lisa looked at it prior to, when we came in and spoke, so she made the comment that we can do this, and then we just move it from there back over, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reimburse the McLennan-Chisholm Fire Department new station budget out of our budget.
Yeah, out of the city budget.
Out of the city building budget fund for $9,951.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion on it?
Yeah, I, I'm just a little concerned, I mean, $9,300, when we were going through the budget, was a lot of money at one point in time.
You were what now?
I said it was a lot of money at one point in time when we were going through this.
For?
For outlays, any kind of outlay that the city made towards any kind of budgetary need.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I would have liked to heads up on this a little bit earlier.
I understand. We didn't have a chance because of time that we're here.
I mean, I get it, so I'm just going to rest on, on trusting you guys that you guys made the right decision, that's all. But I just, you know, it just kind of, because somebody's going to come back, and they're going to go, "They spent that money so quickly, and they didn't even talk about it." You know, it's that transparency factor that everybody complains about.
If it was transparency, we wouldn't even be discussing it tonight.
Absolutely, I get it.
All we did was, we, we used the company that was here at the time, rather than wait till Labor Day to do it where it could cost us more money.
And, you know, I don't mean to be contentious on this, I'm just saying, I just, yeah, I get it, you need to end it.
Unfortunately, we can't call each and every one of you to get approval on it, because if we do that, then we have to publish, we have to publish things, because we called each and every one of you to get a heads up, but it becomes a walking ground.
I get it.
And that's a violation.
Yes, sir.
So we had to make a decision, and I made it. If it's one that we're not happy with, then I'll take a vote. If there's not any other discussion, I'll take, I'll take the vote on it, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, before we go to 6.3, we're going to move down to 6.4, we're going to jump over one. We're going to jump over one if I can not push wrong buttons on my computer. So number 6.4, Discussion and Action Regarding Approving a Letter of Engagement from Murray, Pascal, and Caperton, PC for Preparing Audited Financial Statements for Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021. This is the same company that we've used, I know some of you have been here for, for more than a year, some of you have been there more than two years, this is the same auditing firm we've used over a year for a while. All this is, is a standard letter of engagement to keep that going forward right now. I don't see any reason we're unhappy with their services. Michelle, do you have anything else on it?
The only thing I would point out is they are staying with the same fee. They did not increase their fee for this new letter of engagement.
Great.
All right.
Do they typically, do they typically raise every year?
It's hidden, man.
Minimum.
I think last year and this year.
Okay. Chief, I don't know that we need you right now, but it looks like you got a big piece of equipment across the road.
That's just part of the operation, the load, the very, the very-
Okay, okay, just in case. All right, guys, I'll entertain a motion to approve the letter of engagement for Murray, Pascal, and Caperton.
I'd make a motion to approve a letter of engagement for Murray, Pascal, and Caperton, PCs for Preparing Audited Financial Statements for the year 2020, 2021.
Okay, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not?
This is for 20 and 2021.
This is for 20 and 20, 20 and 21, yes, yes, ma'am, it's the budget year for 2020, 20 dash 2021. All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, the next thing we're going to go into is 6.3, Consider Hiring an Interim City Administrator in Approving an Employment Contract. Before we actually get into that, so we need to go into executive session to discuss that contract. So at this point, we're going to go to 7.1, Adjourn Into Executive Session Close Meeting in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.07, Little A1, matters, personnel matters, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, interim and/or permanent replace, permanent replace of the city administrator in consideration for an employment contract. The time is 6:50. We are now in executive session. Everybody will reconvene in the next room?
Sir, do you make a call?
Yes.[1248.13] It is 7:05. We are back from executive session. No action taken during executive session. Now we'll move back to 6.3, Considering Hiring an Interim City Manager and Approving an Employment Contract. We have, we have been posed with the issue of bringing somebody in in an interim position in the absence of Ms. Lisa until we can get everything in place with the putting ads out and doing all that to, to hire somebody. We were fortunate enough to find somebody that was willing to help us out as an interim city administrator. We've ironed out some things on an employment contract for a six-month period. That individual is Mr. Rick Crowley. What I'm looking for now is a motion to approve the interim city administrator agreement to bring him on board as the interim city administrator.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to hire Mr. Rick Crowley as the interim city administrator and approve the employment agreement drafted by Mr. Holler.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to let Ms. Trudy second it.
Yes.
I got my ladies are first and second. All right, if there's not any discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Mr. Crowley, welcome aboard. Now, what my, my council would like is if you'll push the button on there, turn the little red light on.
Thank you.
They just want to hear a little bit about you.
About me?
About you, and welcome aboard.
I, I retired from, as city manager of Rockwall this, this past February. My, I started work for cities 42 years before that. So, and I've worked for three Texas cities, the city of Burleson when I first got out of college, I was city manager in Colorado City in West Texas for a few years, and then I came to Rockwall. In Rockwall, I served as administrative assistant, and then as director of parks and recreation, as director of public services, as director of municipal services, as things were added to, or the focus of my employment shifted during that time. And served for a number of years as assistant city manager, and then, and then was city manager for the last several years that I worked there. So, so I've been in the business a long time. I look forward to working for this wonderful city and this great council. I hope that I can help you in the interim, in the ways you want to be helped. I will tell you that my, my goal as your interim city manager will be to make